I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The tradition of MTSU's board meetings is to recognize a student veteran. And now it's up to you, gentlemen.
Thank you Chairman Smith, Board Members, President McPhee, ladies and gentlemen. Today I have the privilege to present to you Army Sergeant Mark Lowe. After he graduated from Montgomery Bell Academy, he attended Vanderbilt focused on studying in economics. After two years at Vanderbilt, he decided he wanted to serve our country in uniform, and he enlisted in the United States Army. In September of 2015 to September of 2020, he served in our elite infantry division, the 82nd Airborne Division, as a forward observer and fire support sergeant to include a deployment to combat in Afghanistan. He then returned from the Army and decided to transfer his credits from Vanderbilt here to Middle Tennessee State University. He's majoring in data science. During our salute to Armed Forces football game, he and his family were honored on the field because he's a veteran as a student here with a 4.0 GPA. Ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Mark Lowe.
On behalf of the school and our board, I would like to say a few words to the ladies and gentlemen of the board. This university has been a great transition for me out of the military, the community that's been provided to me, not only from the Daniel Center and all the veteran community and support from this university, but one of my main motivations was actually this man Lieutenant General Hubert came and spoke at my high school in 2019 while I was, had about a year left in the Army. And he was definitely one of the people that pushed me over the edge, and having the veteran support and the new data science degree were the two main factors of me coming to this school. And I'm very blessed and honored to be able to call myself a Blue Raider today, and I appreciate you guys' time. And I hope you guys have a good rest of your meeting.
Now's the time to recognize Coach Jimmy Bourding. Coach has spent 11 years as a Raiders tennis coach, men's tennis coach. Wheaton, Illinois product, helped his team to Sunbelt Championships in 2011 and '12, and most recently followed up with a pair of conference titles, '19 and '21. Before arriving in Murvisburg, coached, coached men's tennis at Drake, Virginia Tech, West Virginia, and William &amp; Mary. Jimmy's a graduate of Butler, where he played tennis. Today, we want to acknowledge Coach for his recent recognition as Conference USA Men's Tennis Coach of the Year. It's the third consecutive year he's received this honor. The 2021 squad ranked 44 nationally in significant wins, including Notre Dame, Vanderbilt. Coach, if you'd come forward.
I wasn't expecting to say anything, but to the men and women of the board, thank you for everything that you do. We, I am overwhelmed with the leadership that you provide and the support that you provide to athletics and all the students. I greatly appreciate it, and thank you so much.
I'll save any remarks to the end of our full agenda. James Floyd, would you please call the row?
Yes, sir. Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Boyd?
Present.
Trustee Cottle?
Here.
Trustee Delay?
Here.
Trustee Freeman?
Here.
Trustee Jacobs?
Present.
Trustee Hamas? Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Carboia?
Here.
Trustee Wright?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start our meeting with requests that we have to speak that have been in order. Both Dr. Nguyen and Dr. Yocle are here to address the board. And Mr. President, do you have, you have some remarks you'd like?
No, Mr. Chairman, just like to welcome the members of the audience who are at our board meeting. Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen, the podium is yours.
Good afternoon, Dr. McPhee and distinguished members of the Board of Trustees. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share what I consider some very serious concerns about my alma mater. Over 15 years ago, I conducted a study on the landmark Guyer case with a focus on UT Knoxville, MTSU, and the University of Memphis. This 38-year lawsuit concluded with a consent decree that would hopefully change the face of higher education in Tennessee. Professional development and recruitment programs, as well as affirmative action practices, were set forth for the defendants to follow for five years. Additionally, all parties in the lawsuit were expected to cooperate in an effort to make higher education in Tennessee better for all students, black and white. All initiatives set forth in the decree were funded by the state with the intent of eliminating vestiges of past discrimination in higher education across Tennessee. What a great celebration it was. I was actually there in the courtroom and felt the pride and relief from the plaintiffs. However, I wanted to know more. This is when I decided to conduct my dissertation research entitled "The Guyer Consent Decree: Years Fullfilled or Unfulfilled Promises." I am here today for a couple of reasons. For, for one, I would be remiss if I did not congratulate my alma mater for all of the success and all of the accomplishments over the years. But also, I want to share with you my concerns about what appears to be many unfulfilled promises from MTSU, and I want to know how we as alumni can help. Will it take another 30 years to meet the goals to address the lack of diversity, to ensure black and brown students succeed consistently at MTSU? Can anyone explain why MTSU's ROTC building bore the name of Nathan Bedford Forrest, a Confederate general and the first grand wizard of the Ku Klux Klan for several decades? Why the MTSU baseball field is named after a known segregationist who wrote a letter to Senator Al Gore asking, "When will they get, quote, 'the nigger' out of Ole Miss?" And please pardon my vernacular, but he wrote it, I didn't. My research contended that higher education institutions must periodically evaluate programs to ensure continued compelling interest and develop strategies to further those interests, and the institutions must make adjustments as goals change or policies become ineffective. What has happened to MTSU? The four-year graduation rate for African-Americans at MTSU is 24.6%. For African-American males, it's 20.2%. For females, it's 20, African-American females, it's 27.1%. The majority of African-Americans who attend MTSU will not graduate in six years. I graduated in three. And the most troublesome is that the four-year graduation rate for first-generation African-American males who are Pell-eligible is 10.5%. Could those males end up like George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Trayvon Martin, Oscar Grant, Michael Brown? I could go on and on, but I think you get the point. There's a major problem here. Black students are leaving. From 4,727 black students in 2013 to 2,851 students in 2020. Education was supposed to be the pathway to prosperity for black people, but if we are not given equal resources, equal support, and engaged in a climate of belonging, ladies and gentlemen, we will leave and probably not succeed. As I conclude, I am a professor, a higher ed administrator, I am a diversity practitioner, researcher, and advocate for underrepresented populations. Unfortunately, my lived experiences, and most importantly, the lived experiences of my ancestors paved the way for me to stand before you today. I don't know what the underrepresented faculty have faced since my research, but it wasn't good back then, and it doesn't look good right now. MTSU should have been committed to addressing issues relevant to underrepresented groups throughout the campus by implementing strategies such as mentoring and training programs. Yet, over the past 10 years, only 10 black faculty received tenure, and only 24 received promotion. Very similar data that was revealed in my research almost two decades ago. So again, what has been happening at my beloved MTSU for the past 20 years around diversity, equity, belonging, and inclusion? I read the alumni magazine with great pride, and then I look at this data, and I'm like, what is happening at MTSU? A lack of representation of ethnically and culturally diverse faculty does not help in preparing our students to become future leaders in ethnically, culturally, and linguistically diverse environments. In approximately 30 years from now, the average U.S. citizen, according to the census statistics, will be as likely to trace ancestry to Africa, Asia, the Hispanic world, the Pacific Islands, and the Islamic world as to trace it to Europe. At that point, diversity in the workplace, ladies and gentlemen, and on our campuses will not be a goal, but a reality. The leaders in this room, each and every one of us, will need to help bridge the political, racial, cultural, and economic boundaries of the communities it serves boldly and courageously. Otherwise, our beloved alma mater will not be prepared to mentor, coach, or sponsor any faculty of color who ultimately provides the leadership and cultural relevant pedagogy needed to ensure our black and brown students are equipped to effectively work and function within any given environment. Where do we go from here? This is a necessary imperative. Thank you so much for allowing me to share.
Thank you. Dr. Yocle, you're next. Good afternoon.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Trust and Dr. McPhee for allowing me the opportunity to speak here on this afternoon. I recently had oral surgery, so I'm going to keep my mask on, and so that's, that's one of the reasons my alliteration and articulation might not be as great as it should be. But I come here today and I stand here as a graduate, as an alumni of MTSU. Over 40 years ago, I graduated in 1984. I have a bachelor's of business administration and accounting, and I actually served on a commission and a board back 40-some-odd years ago with President Ingram and Dr. Floyd that addressed diversity, that addressed inclusion, that addressed tenure for faculty and positions within the university. I stand here today a little bit concerned and worried that we're at the same place. 40 years ago, we talked about how to increase enrollment of minority students within the MTSU community and how to actually increase the number of tenured professors. When I look at the data and I see the things that are continually going on, it's as if we're in the same place. 40 years removed, we're in the same place. I challenge us as a university, I challenge us as alma mater, as alumni, to, what are those next steps? What do those next steps look like? What can we do as a university to address it? The same racism, racist systematic institutional racism that existed then appears to be seen here now. Now, what does that appearance look like? We take students who come in from all backgrounds, and here's the thing, MTSU, which we love, we support, and we're proud of. We know that we can graduate African-American students. We know that. How do we know it? Our athletic department graduates them at a high rate. What systems are in place that are helping those students graduate that are not being put forth for other students to graduate also? How do we come together as a community? How do we come together as a university to deal with that? I challenge us on this. Race in this nation has been a difficult question, has been a difficult discussion for us to have. We never want to have it. We never want to discuss it, and we never want to talk about it. So therefore, transparency, equity, and equality are never achieved. I challenge this board to take the next step. Without an honest conversation, without a conversation that deals with the inequities that exist in our society, we cannot change those numbers. We cannot change those numbers. It takes at an executive level, those things to happen. It takes at an executive level for those commitments to come forth and be brought forth to say, "We will graduate African-American students, minority students, students that come from lower socioeconomic backgrounds. We will graduate them at a higher degree and a higher level." Why not MT, my question is, why couldn't MTSU can't become the model? Why couldn't MTSU can't become the model, really, for the state, for the nation, and for the world? Why not? If not us, then who? If not now, when? MTSU, we can do better. MTSU, we should expect ourselves to do better. And MTSU, we ought to find ourselves being able to do better. And again, I challenge us. I was going to read a poem, but I'm not going to read it. I'll just tell you, you can go look it up, but it's called "Bridge Builders." It's time for us to build bridges for that next generation. I'm 40 years, I came from up north, I've been down here ever since. I love it here, I love this institution, I love this community, but we actually should do better, and I have a responsibility to build a bridge to the next young man that looks like me. Okay? I had that opportunity, I had that responsibility. And so, I'm willing to step out and do those things to allow those individuals to have that opportunity, but we need your support. If we don't address racism, systematic racism, institutional racism, if we don't address those things, sadly to say, some other young man will be standing in my seat, in my shoes, 40 years from now. And I realize those are not easy conversations, and, but we need to have them. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Nguyen and Reverend Yocle, I want to thank you, both of you, for appearing before the board today and sharing your concern, a concern that we all have at this university. And I also want to assure you that the mission of our university is to work towards the academic success of all of our students with the goal of graduating them from this campus. Now, this includes our students of color and others, particularly our black males. I have a packet of information that my assistant is going to give both of you that highlights many of the diversity-related programs and initiative implemented over the years, along with several currently programs and initiatives that we are going to be putting in place. And later on in this presentation, you will hear from one of them. The packet also includes initiative to support the hiring and retention of employees of color and other underrepresented faculty. And I'd be happy to share with you the budget and the efforts that we have put in during my tenure to accomplish that goal. Please note that I have always had an open-door policy to meet with members of the community and others. So after you've had an opportunity to review this packet, I would welcome, I would truly welcome the opportunity for you to sit down with me and us have, continue this conversation, continue to hear your concern, but most importantly, to be able to discuss the efforts, the resources that this university has put in this effort. And I certainly believe that after you've had that chance to get a complete picture, an accurate picture of the university performance in these areas, I am confident you will see that MTSU has made and continues to make significant efforts in helping every student be successful in graduating, including our students of color and other economically disadvantaged. Now, I also want you to know that TX's most recent data shows that MTSU is the second, is second only to TSU or HBCU in the total number of black graduates in the state, which includes males and females. Not MTSU data, TX's most recent data. And at the same time, I want to acknowledge that certainly we're not perfect. And like colleges and universities in our state and around the country, we all are facing the same challenges and disappointments in achieving the level of success that we all want and we all are pursuing. However, I want you to know we are constantly working and seeking ways to achieve greater success for all of our students. And I welcome the opportunity to hear your suggestions, to get you involved, and have you participate in the process of having this university be successful in that goal. And in this regard, we will be bringing a consultant on our campus next semester, spring of 2022, to help us assess our efforts and provide recommendations of best practices for future consideration. I also would like to invite you, all of you in the audience, to stay for my president's report that will be given later in this meeting. There are two special presentations that will be included. The first is the Executive Director of Tennessee High Education Commission will present THEX Black Male Success Initiative, and I hope you read that document very carefully, because it shows that MTSU is one of the top performers in the graduation and the retention of students, and that we have the most significant number of African-Americans and students of color in the state of Tennessee. And then finally, there's going to be a very exciting presentation on the Fairness, Justice, and Equity Center that we are establishing in the College of Education to attract African-American teachers, males, and blacks, and others. So thank you very much for your concerns. Again, I want to assure you that all of us at this university share those, and we are working towards improving in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Freeman asked for some time to give us comments, and now's a good time.
Chairman, Chairman Smith, thank you. It's interesting to hear about the Black Male Success Initiative that THEC has. It's because it was my idea. I got the idea for the Black Male Success Initiative, Dr. Nguyen, because I was sitting in this room looking at the data that you spirited out, and I brought the idea to the initiative to leadership here, but it was not well-received. So I took the Black Male Success Initiative idea to THEC, whom you will hear from later on. There's a lot of spin that happens on MTSU's campus, a lot of spin. Keep your eyes on the data. Nobody said we don't have an open-door policy. Nobody said that. Keep your eyes on the data. This is a difficult day. This is a difficult day for me, because I came here with nothing, with the hopes and the dreams of my parents and my ancestors, and somehow made something out of myself based on what I learned at this university. And then I get a call from the governor and Dr. McPhee asking me, would I come and serve on this board, which would be the, one of the honors of a lifetime, which I thought would be one of the honors of a lifetime. It's great to see the black alumni in this room, the scenes whose father I admire and respect, Brother Yocle, Brother Charles Wilson, Williams, people that I look up to all of Serving this board as the only African-American is difficult. The last year has not been fun. I realized that some of you, you don't care about people of color or poor white people. I'm not saying that you're racist, but I'm saying that you don't mind turning a blind eye to the racism that exists on this campus and the evidence that's in the data. The evidence is in the data. The Guyer decision said there was racism here, and every now and then I get an email from board members suggesting that maybe it ain't racism. I have never been on a board, I have never been on a board where I have received so many microaggressions from not being recognized to speak, to being told, "I've heard enough from you." Think about that. To administrators rolling their eyes when I speak. Trustee Delay, Trustee Wright, and Trustee Smith, the way you have treated me has been despicable. It has been despicable. And the overall actions of this board has been, has not been true blue, has not been true blue. Chairman Smith, you've tried to use parliamentary procedures to silence me when I have been speaking up for African-Americans and people of color. You don't have any diversity in your committee chairs. We even elected a person to a leadership position that missed about two years' worth of meetings. Now, many of you have known me for many years, and know me from starting with nothing, and know me for being a straight shooter. My expertise is in adding value and creating, creating millions of dollars of wealth, like my good friend here. I didn't, I didn't join this board, I promise you, I didn't join this board to address the I promise you, I didn't join this board to address the diversity issues because I don't have any expertise in that. I served on several corporate boards and I don't have to say anything, Mr. Burns, about diversity. I served on the Board of Blue Cross Blue Shield. Zero percent of my time is talked about diversity because they actually have a program in place that hires diverse candidates, promotes diverse candidates. I don't have to talk about diversity. Diversity is not my expertise. I'm an expert at building value, making millions. That's what I'm an expert at. But you all have changed, you have turned me to trying to figure out a diversity problem here at MTSU. What I do have an eye for is reading data and being able to see the way race plays into it. And unfortunately, unfortunately, Tom, being the only African American on this board, unfortunately, Rick, being the only African American on this board, I have to address it. It's not something that I want to do. But my dad couldn't vote when he came home from the army. Some board somewhere made it possible, spoke up. My mom couldn't vote, somebody somewhere spoke up. I, I couldn't be, I can't be silent. I can't be silent and not address it. So what does this have to do with the Freeman's Fellows that I'm going to start here at MTSU? The subtle racism, the microaggressions, and all the things that come with them are not limited to this boardroom. As you've heard, it's impacting people of color, poor white people across this campus. So I've decided, I've decided to pay for 50 students to go through the Scholars Academy to improve their chances of graduating. Just so that you know, the graduation gap between whites and blacks at this university continues to be wide. Sending 50 people through this program will double the number of people from last summer. And I'm fortunate to be on the board of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee, and they're going to match some of the funds from the Freeman Foundation. The total cost of the program would be about $100,000, $100,000. And I will meet with these students on a regular basis, providing internships for some at the various companies I'm invested in. The goal for them is to feel attached, Brother Yocle, to feel attached, brother Dunn, to this university. To feel that they belong. The goal for this program is to have 100%, a 100% graduation rate. We're not looking for some awards. We're not looking to get an award from Newsweek or to be the best at this or better than them. We're looking for solid, sound results. No awards needed. Another program that I'm implementing is a program for MTSU students where my foundation is going to partner with organizations across Murfreesboro to mentor African American and poor white students. I say all that to say, I ain't just talking about it. I ain't just talking about it. You can hush me up on this board all you want. You can make it difficult for me to speak all you want. You can determine I can't be on the agenda all you want, but I got my wallet and all that it due to speaking. All of this is in addition to the 30 partial scholarships, Mr. Bells, that my foundation has provided and the use of my plane to fly supplies to countries due to Blue Rain Relief that included flying our president, this board, to events at no cost to the university. My goal, Mr. Bells, is to be one of the largest donors at this university. That's my goal. Racism is present in this boardroom and on this campus. The black alumni in this room know it. They felt it when they were here. I felt it 30 years ago when I was a student. Today, I feel it as a businessman and as a trustee. I hope this board will recognize this is a problem and embrace the opportunity to address it. I'm going to use my name, my reputation, and my resources to fight it and to expose it. Spinning stuff is not going to work. We could be a leader in it. The Black Male Success Initiative idea that I had, that I took to THEC, my initial dream for that was to reside here at MTSU, and we could be the thought leader. But unfortunately, I had to take the idea to somewhere, to someone who welcomed it. And you're going to hear from her later. You're going to hear from her later. Dr. McPhee, I hope that you quit downplaying and being a smokescreen for the racism that's here. Stop with the window dressing, the small programs, talking about the programs that you've had that have not had much effect. Stop with this meaningless awards and the empty platitudes. This school, MTSU, used to be the largest in the state. We're the same size today as we were about 20 years ago. We're the same size today as we were about 20 years ago. Deion Allen, in closing. This board owes me nothing. But we owe every student on this campus. We don't owe them spin. We don't owe them some national award that's for this board and for this administration. We owe them a fair shot at graduating. A fair shot. Dr. McPhee, in 2016, a group of students ask you to formally and personally apologize to black students of MTSU for your lack of concern and awareness. This is not, this is not me saying this. This is what the students said. I'll repeat, to formally and personally apologize to black students for your lack of concern and awareness for the ongoing issues facing black students. I hope that you get around to doing it. That would be a great start. Thank you very much.
Has everybody reviewed the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve or any changes or whatever?
I move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes were approved. Trustee Wright, it's your turn.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Academic Affairs Student Life and Athletics Committee met on November 9, 2021. The committee approved the minutes from its August 24, 2021 meeting. Today, I would like to present three action items for the board's consideration. First, a request for approval of a new academic degree program, a Master of Science in Data Science by Provost Mark Burns. In accordance with University Policy 251, approval of academic programs, units, and modifications states all academic actions that require review and approval by THEC must be approved by the Board of Trustees. The committee unanimously approved the new degree program. The second item for consideration by the committee was expedited tenure for a recent hire presented by Provost Burns. Professor Amy Aldridge Sanford has been reviewed for tenure by her department chair, Department and College Committee, and dean according to MTSU Policy 204 tenure and the respective college and department policies. The president and university provost recommended that tenure be granted effective February 1, 2022. The committee unanimously approved the recommended expedited tenure be granted. The last item before the committee requiring action was approval of policy revision, Policy 301 admissions. The proposed revisions update the policy to align with the revised Tennessee Code Title 49, Chapter 7, Part 1, and was approved unanimously by the committee. Informational items before the committee included performance metrics update, enrollment update, and athletics update. And Mr. Chairman and trustees, materials outlining the committee's actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting or in your board notebooks, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. We need a motion and a second on these action items.
So moved.
Second.
Was been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Normally, in between those, you get questions.
Would you like a question, sir?
Yes. I, I gave a presentation about the Black Alumni, the Black Male Success Initiative at THEC. They asked me to say a few words, Mr. Flores.
Is this a question, sir?
Yeah, yeah, I'm about to pose a question. Thank you. And when I was at the meeting, they put up the first time freshman change, first time freshman change Fall 2021 enrollment numbers. And MTSU is at the bottom. I don't know if that was discussed or seen in our committee. I may, I may have missed it. But they also put up, so we were at the bottom of there, we were the bottom. And then they also put up the undergraduate headcount change for Fall 2020 to Fall 2021. MTSU is second from the bottom. I just wanted to put that as a matter of information. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that?
Sure, please.
I wish we would have this slide that showed in 2019, MTSU had a 15% increase, the largest increase of all the state universities in freshman class. And the data that has been referenced by Trustee Freeman deals with after the COVID, would MTSU be having such a high profile? It's not an excuse, it's just a fact. And I'll be giving some data, the current data of our fall of 22 admissions and application during my report. And I think, members of the board and audience, you'll be quite impressed with the interest in this university. It is very significant.
I'll call on a vote for the, revote on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Trustee Delay, it's time for your committee report.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Audit and Compliance Committee met on November 9, 2021. The committee approved the minutes from its August 24, 2021 meeting. At our last meeting, there were no action items brought before the committee. Informational items included results of external review and the quarterly report results of internal audit reports. The public meeting of the committee adjourned, and the committee went into executive session to discuss audits and investigations. Mr. Chairman and trustees, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Delay. Vice Chair Kaboia, would you give us a committee report for executive and governance?
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Executive and Governance Committee met on November 9, 2021. The committee approved the minutes from the August 24, 2021 meeting. Today, I would like to present one action item for the board's consideration regarding the president's-
Excuse me, Vice Chair Kaboia, before we go forward, we would need to approve the minutes from the Audit Committee report. A motion was not presented here, and I realize it was not stated in your script, so that does need to occur.
Would it, has everybody read the minutes that you speak of? Any changes, corrections? I need a motion to approve the minutes of the Audit Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, James. I'll probably skip right over there.
Councilwoman Floyd, can I move forward at this point?
Yes, thank you.
No problem. So as I mentioned, today I'd like to present one action item for the board's consideration related to the president's compensation. Finance Chair Jacobs, thank you, Joe, presented a recommendation to the committee concerning the president's compensation, which was based on the evaluation of the president reported at the May 2021 Executive and Governance Committee. The recommendation included a retroactive 2.7% increase in the president's annual base salary, increasing to $425,950, as well as a $25,000 one-time bonus. The salary increase would be retroactive to July 2021, as was previously implemented for campus employees. The committee approved this recommendation unanimously. Also during the committee meeting, there was one information item presented related to the 2021 Self-Evaluation Results Action for Improvement of this board. Mr. Chairman and trustees, materials outlining the action item before us was made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, that concludes my report.
Is that your motion to approve this?
I ask for a motion.
So moved.
What's the motion?
To approve the action item related to the president's compensation.
So is that, sure.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions?
I'm sorry, can we clarify who made that motion?
Me. That it.
Trustee Delay?
Thank you.
I am sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Want to oppose, let's have a roll call then.
Trustee Baker?
Approved.
Trustee Boyd?
Approved.
Trustee Cottle?
Approved.
Trustee Delay?
Approved.
Trustee Freeman?
I don't approve.
Trustee Jacobs?
Approved.
Trustee Smith?
Approved.
Trustee Kaboia?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Trustee Jacobs, committee report on finance personnel.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on November the 9, 2021. The committee approved the minutes from its August 24, 2021 meeting. Today, I would like to present one action item for the board's consideration. The 2021-22 October Revised Budget presented by Vice President Alan Thomas. Changes since the July original budget included adjustments to tuition and fee revenue to include the remaining tuition increase previously approved by the board, adjusted expenditure budgets to reflect year-end balances as of June 30, 2021, and adjustments to auxiliary and restricted budgets based on information obtained since the July budget submission, including funding received under the American Rescue Plan, ARP. The committee unanimously approved the revised budget as presented. Four informational items presented to the committee included salary data update, THEC 2022-23 capital outlay maintenance recommendations, THEC's 2022-23 operating recommendations, and a philanthropy report. and a philanthropy report. Mr. Chairman and trustees, the material outlined by the actions of this committee were made available for your review to this, prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Do I have a motion for the action item that's recommended by your committee?
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved. Mr. President, it's time for any remarks you have for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As always, I do appreciate the opportunity to update the board on matters at the university since our last meeting. First, I would like to give you a brief report on our enrollment activity and projections for the coming year. Our December 1 application and admit numbers are exceptionally high and promising this year. As of December 1, we received more freshman application than we have ever, including our peak enrollment of 2011. We received a record total of 9,019 freshman applications. This represents an increase in freshman application as of our December 1 scholarship deadline, an increase, ladies and gentlemen, of 58.9% over last year at this time. And as you all know, that last year was a year that we were recuperating from the COVID, and every university except TSU showed a decrease in their enrollment, and we discussed why that was the case. And compared with 2019, we have an increase of over 5.5% over two years ago at this time. And also, we've been able to admit a record total of 6,064 new freshmen for the class of 2022. This represents an increase of freshman admits, we talked about applications, now we talk about admits, of 58.9% over last year at the same time. And looking at the previous year since last year, obviously it was a COVID year, recuperating from COVID, it shows a 21.6% increase over two years ago at this time. From previous discussion, you'll remember that in Fall 2019, as I mentioned earlier, we enrolled the second-largest freshman class ever at this university. On December 1, leading up to Fall, we had admitted 5,002 new freshmen as compared to the 6,064 new freshmen we have admitted this year. As anticipated, our transfer application admits are both down by 10%. This is expected based on the very significant decline in enrollment in the community colleges, double-digit decline at our partner community colleges. And as you all know, we have 52% of all our student population are transfer students. So therefore, when the community college lose their enrollment, it also impacts MTSU. Their strength is not limited just to Tennessee. Enrollment at two-year programs across the country have seen significant declines over the past 18 to 24 months. So, Mr. Chairman, member of the board, overall, I am pleased to report that we have admitted a total of 6,269 new students for this coming Fall 2022. Again, which is the most ever admitted as of December 1, and we still have several months before our applications and admits end. Now, it certainly takes a great team, which consists of many individuals and administrators, to get this kind of outcome. So today, I would like to acknowledge and thank the leader of our recruiting and admission team, Dr. Deb Sales, who and her colleagues have done an extraordinary job in getting us to this point with such significant interest. There's one thing to have the applications, there's another when students apply and admit and indicate that they have an interest in the university. And Deb and her staff, admissions counselors, have traveled around the state of Tennessee and three states, Alabama, Kentucky, and Georgia. And I was part of that team that did our true blue tour, 14 of them around the state of Tennessee and in Kentucky, Georgia, and Alabama. So Deb, thank you so much for the great work that you and your staff are doing. Next, I would like to introduce a special guest joining us via Zoom, Dr. Emily House, Executive Director of Tennessee High Education Commission. Dr. House will present a brief overview of TX Black Male Success Initiative report, including the process, the findings, and the recommendations. And in speaking earlier this week with Dr. House, she indicated to me that the report is a product of the Tennessee High Education Commission. That was the information that she provided me. Dr. House, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. McPhee, Chairman Smith, members. Can everybody hear me and see me okay?
We can't see you, but we can hear you, Dr. House.
Okay, I have my video going, and it looks like I'm on a screen perhaps somewhere in your room.
We can hear you clearly, though.
But I'll just start talking. Okay, well, I'll just start talking.
There you go. You're there.
There you are.
My video, there we go, here I am, hey, everybody. Okay, so it looks like there's a little bit of a delay, so I'm watching myself in real time, and I'm watching myself on a delay, so if I am disoriented, that is why. Good afternoon, everybody, happy to join you. Emily House from the Higher Ed Commission, I am joined with Dr. Julie Roberts, she is off of our screen here, but Julie is our Deputy CAO here at THEC, and she and her team really did a lot of work to bring the Black Male Success work to light. Dr. McPhee mentioned the report specifically, which I'll speak to kind of broadly, and Julie and Jeffrey Northley, who's not able to join us today, from Julie's team, really were the tip of the spear. So Julie is off camera, but I'm looking at her to say thank you for all the work that she and Jeffrey did on this work. So just, I will be very brief, I know there's been a lot of discussion already today related to support necessary in the outcomes for black students and students of color across the higher ed enterprise, but I just want to give a little bit of context about the development of this work, the execution of this work, and kind of where we see this work growing now. So Julie and Jeffrey, who I just mentioned a moment ago, convened four times this year a task force comprised of community members, community college representatives, university representatives, and just a number of people really committed to having this discussion. That group met four times over the 2021 calendar year. From that resulted a report, and I'm not sure, Dr. McPhee and Chairman Smith, if members of the board have this report in front of them, but this report is available on the THEC website, and we can provide copies as appropriate. And that was really the kind of deliverable from this task force. So want to highlight a few things, a few findings, and then where we plan to take this work moving forward, and then kind of wrap up from there. So I won't go into too much detail about any particular part of the report, but the report really focuses a great deal on the arc of the discrepancies that exist between black male students and other students, students of all other races and ethnicities on campus. And I view this report as addressing three margins, the margin of enrollment, the margin of persistence, and the margin of graduation. And if you were to look at this report and the data that's presented therein, you can see that there are true database discrepancies statewide in the university sector and the community college sector across the board as it relates to the success of this subgroup of students versus kind of the general population of students. But as we think of the first margin being enrollment, the college-going rate for black male students in Tennessee is lower than that of, I say the general population, for my stat institutions in the room, there's more if he wants to than that, but to the general population of students. And the same is true for retention and graduation, but just speaking at first, to the college-going rate discrepancy, there is a lot of work that has been being, has been done, is being done, but also to be done when we think about the high school-level interventions. So we here at THEC are the holders of the state's Gear Up Grant, we have the Advised Tennessee Program, all of which are really focused on building college knowledge and familiarity with the college-going process for all students, and thinking about ways to target the way that that information needs to be transmitted to subgroups of students, including students of color. So that's a big one, a big one here. Also, as we think about our partnering organizations, Tennessee Achieves, the Ayers Foundation, how can we partner with them to really continue to increase the college-going rate across the board, but also for black males, students of color more broadly, underrepresented students more broadly. Something that often comes up as a strategy is a summer bridge program. I know that was something that the Black Male Success Task Force talked about at length, but that is something that we are working to reinstate. I will spare everybody the budget conversations, but we are working to post-COVID reinstate summer bridge programming this coming summer, and are thinking about ways to target subpopulations of students in ways that would lead to greater success for those subpopulations. So not only do we want to have summer bridge kind of back as part of the calendar or part of the timeline for a lot of students, but how can we think about summer bridge in ways that will target other subpopulations of students or specific subpopulations of students to ensure their success? So that would be the margin of enrollment. The persistence margin, again, a lot of this is detailed in the report, don't mean to go into too much detail, but we think about additional summer programming between year one and year two. What would a retention-oriented program look like for students between their freshman and sophomore years, or for the community college students, year one and year two? What can mentorship programs look like? What can completion grants or emergency grant funding look like, not only for all students, but for specific subgroups of students? And I keep saying that, we're talking about black male students in this specific instance, and that's the genesis of the report, that's the content of the report, but what can we be thinking about in terms of subgroups kind of writ large as it relates to making it such that it is not the case that a flat tire keeps a student from re-enrolling, or a student who has a medical bill or a utilities bill that they just don't go to school anymore because they're concerned about paying their bill? So how can we think about completion grants in that regard, as well as perhaps expanding the completion coaching initiative from the community colleges to the four-year institutions? We have done that in partnership with Tennessee Achieves, Chrissy DeLaHondro and her team at the community college level, and what can that look like for all students, black male students, all students of color, whomever, at the university sector? We talk a lot in the report about graduation rates, and the short answer there is that a student cannot complete if they don't persist, and they can't persist if they don't enroll. So everything that I just mentioned is really big, important pieces of the puzzle as it relates to getting students across that finish line. You need to get them in, you need to get them through, and then across the finish line. That will be the way in which we can mitigate these large discrepancies between black males, black females, white students, general population, all different subgroups of students. So if anybody has read the report, has specific questions about the report, we don't need to do so in real time right now, but Dr. McPhee has all of my information. If anyone has specific data questions or programmatic questions, whatever else, the report includes additional kind of vignettes about national best practices, some community college and university levels of best practices across the state and across the country. Happy to discuss those further as relevant and as convenient to the board. Finally, I'll just wrap up by saying that the task force really thought very critically about this. Again, credit to Julie and Jeffrey on the THEC team for their leadership here, because I know that the task force was able to really dive deeply into the data and dive deeply into the issues and think about what to do moving forward. So everything I just mentioned, these kind of more general interventions, what we are doing on our end is thinking about ways to target them more specifically to black males, to black females, to students of color generally, to low-income students generally, because it's not necessarily the case that what's best for some is best for all or vice versa, but thinking about what the best practices are to really meet students where they are and to serve the needs of different subpopulations. So we are engaging with philanthropy, we are engaging with the state budget folks, trying to figure out what the best way forward is programmatically, and then the resources to put behind that. As always, welcome any feedback and welcome any thoughts on that. So I think I will stop there. That was pretty rapid fire from my part. Dr. McPhee knows I'm a New Yorker, so I talk very fast anyway, but I'm happy to take any questions from the board or provide any other information that would be helpful. So thank you, Chairman Smith, thank you, President McPhee, board members for the time, and I will stop there and welcome any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. House. And while you're here, I just want you to tell the board that in early April or May, when you started this initiative, I gave you a call and told you that the university would be very interested in supporting, and we would recommend any staff member to participate in this initiative.
Yes, that, so that is correct. I will say, President McPhee, not only you, but all of the institution leaders have been very supportive of this work. I probably get more questions about this than I do many, many other things. So that is absolutely true, and that, I think, is reflective of just the general appetite to have these conversations. I think for a long time, there was a lot of hesitation around these conversations, at least at a state level, I cannot speak to any particular campus level, but I think there really is an appetite for conversation, but more importantly, execution on the work. And that has been not surprising, I don't mean to imply that, but that has been really, really wonderful to see and to hear.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Trustee Freeman?
Dr. House, Del Friedman, can't see Julie, but tell her I said hello. The task force spent many, many hours on this work, different universities from around the state. And some of the findings that were surprising to some of us was that oftentimes, students are not dropping out of school because they're flunking out, they're dropping out of school because they don't have the financial resources to stay in. Can you speak to that? And then also, when I gave the presentation to THEC a couple weeks ago, I talked about the fact that we know that we can graduate African-American males if we put the resources with them, the task force, I attended every task force meeting, that we can graduate African-American males if we put the resources with them. And I used the example of, at your meeting, that if an African-American male can run a 4240 and score a touchdown and shoot a three and actually make it, their chances of graduating from our university is about 80, 90%. But if they can't do that, it falls down into 30-something percent. So my persistence is that we just got to add more resources, and I think THEC has talked about that as well.
Yes, sir. So for the first part of your question, that was really the part of my remarks and the part of many of the conversations we've had about micro grants, emergency grants, completion grants, call them what you will, but you are correct that it is not often the case that it's an academic issue that keeps any student, black male or otherwise, from dropping out. It's kind of life gets in the way. There's an ill family member, something is, you know, for many of us, we're very lucky that a flat tire does not derail either our finances or is anything more than just an inconvenience. That's not true for many students across all of Tennessee higher ed. So as we think specifically about these emergency grants or completion grants, but we also think more broadly about the best ways to do financial aid from the state perspective, which is how I spend a lot of time, my time thinking, what I spend my time thinking about, I think there, there's a lot of considerations to be given there, because it is true, and the research kind of bears this out, this isn't me just, you know, talking, that it's very often non-academic challenges that lead students to stop out or drop out from higher ed. You know, to your point about the athletes, I think that's a perpetual kind of where do you put your resources type of question. This did come up at our November board meeting, and I think it's a relevant line of- inquiry. I think it's really just a, a resource kind of conversation. And, you know, for better or for worse, students who are athletes, regardless of their race or ethnicity, are often given different treatment or have access to different resources than again, the general student population. So I think there's more to explore there for sure, sir.
And also, could you, could you speak to the fact that our next step is having some study groups at the different campuses that, that's rolling out at UT and other campuses? And we'd like to be a part of that as well.
Yes, that's right. So I don't, I'm looking at Julie, the institutions have been chosen yet or they've not been chosen yet to participate? So, oh, okay, we're starting with the task force members, that's perfect. In order to really focus in, do some focus groups campus by campus in terms of the, the needs of black males on campus as well as students kind of across the, the spectrum. So yes, all institutions will be invited to participate in that and we'll get that work rolling in the spring. Yeah? Yeah?
Thank you very much.
All right. Again, thank you, Dr. House and the commission for recognizing the priority and sharing your findings. And we certainly look forward to working with THEC as you move forward in this very important initiative.
Thank you again.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you all.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I want to introduce a group of individuals who are working together on a very exciting initiative. But first allow me to give you a brief introduction to this project and as they come up to the podium. During the recent work of the Tennessee's State Collaborative on Reform Education, better known as SCORE, and the consulting team education first in 2019, 2020, one of the recommended strategic move to advance the work of the College of Education at MTSU was to create a center to discuss the recruitment of and provide support for diverse teacher candidates. Now, although COVID-19 pandemic was in full swing, spring 2020, the College of Education began the foundational work to establish a center of fairness, justice, and equity through education with the purpose of formally engaging in the internal and external work that would do a new here, a moment about the goals and the mission. But today we have Dr. Rick Van Oostdale, Dean of the College of Education, Dr. Michelle Stevens, professor and coordinator of our professional counseling program and director of the Fairness, Justice, and Equity Center in the College of Education, and an outstanding individual that got to meet about a year and a half ago, who's a part of this partnership, Dr. Patrick Washington, Executive Director of Man Up Teacher Fellowship. They will share with you their recent work in the Fairness, Justice, and Equity Center in the College of Education. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, President McPhee, and thank you board for giving us time to talk to you a little bit today about the new center that we're forming in the College of Education. In the interest of time, my name is Rick Van Oostdale, I serve as the dean of the College of Education at this time, and I want to introduce Dr. Michelle Stevens, who's a faculty member in our college and has been working closely on this project.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the invite. Yes, my name is Dr. Michelle Stevens. I am the Director of Fairness, Justice, and Equity Center in the College of Education, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to tell you more about the work that we have, have started and have been doing since 2019, like Dr. McPhee stated. And really, it was work that came from the self-assessment that the College of Education completed and led to a renewed commitment of continuing and implementing measures that lead to student success through a five-year strategic plan. One of the strategies focused on creating a diversity center. So with Dean Van Oostdale's creativity and wisdom, the idea of a center that not only focuses on diversity, but virtues that impact humanity was born. The center will focus on cultivating a learning environment that is fair, that is just and equitable for all students, faculty, and staff. So the Fairness, Justice, and Equity Center, we call FJE, is closely aligned also with the university's strategic plan in that it leverages the quality of academic programs to recruit, enroll, educate, graduate, and link a diverse body of students to a future of professional civic engagement. So we're here today, very quickly, to offer you an overview of who we are, the center, our mission and vision, areas of focus, and the partnerships that we formed. And one of our partners, as stated before, is Dr. Patrick Washington, and he's going to be talking about the Man Up program. So basically, who we are, we are a collective, a collective of educators within the College of Education, within MTSU and outside, who, we are a champion of fair, just, and equitable practices. So we're lifelong learners and we know that this work is very important, as, as we heard throughout the, the entire meeting today. Our mission is to assist the university by supporting all existing diversity, equity, and inclusion programming throughout the university, supporting the professional and personal development needs of faculty and staff, and we'll engage in the recruitment and retention of diverse teacher prep candidates, advanced degree-seeking students, and COE faculty members. The vision is to cultivate an inclusive and diverse COE by intentionally recruiting these faculty, teacher candidates and such. And we know that an increased amount of diversity yields creativity, new insights, and a multiplicity of perspectives, and innovative skills, all of which are beneficial for everyone involved. So we know that diversity is important for everyone. So the areas of focus, and I won't go through each one of these, but it's education, community engagement and support, advocacy, research, recruitment, and retention. And all of those things will come from the, the FJE. So you all should have a handout that talks a little bit more about the areas of focus. And so those things are possible and projected projects that we're going to be engaging in. So that's through education, community engagement, advocacy, research, recruitment, and retention. So we will be partnering with several community partners, but two of whom is listed in your, your handout. So Dr. Beatrice Swett, and I think you'll receive the handout later, and Man Up Teacher Fellowship. So we will have two main recruitment programs. One is the intersectionality recruitment program, which will be very broad. And again, the goal is to assist the university by supporting all existing diversity, equity, and inclusion, and really strategically planning with the COE, other stakeholders, in actively embracing and supporting each student's unique characteristics and needs, and ultimately focusing on the continuing improvement and intersectionality of the recruitment program. And so it's going to be a program that's recruiting throughout and very broad. So I'll let Dr. Washington talk about Man Up.
Good afternoon. Bring you greetings from North Mississippi, small rural community called Ashland. I want to thank the Board of Trustees and Dr. McPhee for this tremendous opportunity. I've been in education for over two decades. The one thing that I was waiting for Dr. McPhee to mention is that my wife Vicki and I are tuition paying, paying parents at MTSU. So I'm learning a great deal about the institution that we decided to send our daughter to by observing and getting to meet you all. And so I'm, I'm really honestly thrilled. We're excited, I'm excited for a number of reasons. I was telling Dr. Stevens and, and Dr. Van Oostal, Dr. Stewart, I was like, the vibe in the room is good. I don't know if y'all noticed, but I'm a black male, African-American male. Have y'all, y'all picked up on that? It's interesting to be on the sideline and hear folks discuss you like third person, like we need to do this for black males, do this and do that, and where are they? And, you know, why aren't they finishing school? Same conversation we had three years ago. I spent in 2012, during my tenure superintendent, I had worked all over the country. I was the youngest principal in Memphis at twenty-six. I was the, when I started teaching at twenty-one, I was one of only two other black men in the school. Mr. Jackson left after that first year and that left me. And all of the most difficult little boys who looked like me, the principal brought him and said, and the parents said, he needs a man. And after the first week, I said, I need a man too, because they about to run me out of the room, right? But after that, becoming principal superintendent, there was a noticeable absence of black and brown men in schools, but to the points that have been made, I'm a graduate of Mississippi State and Ole Miss, no secret that's SCC. All of those programs, like most programs in the country, football teams and basketball teams, sports programs have a number of those black men. But when they don't make it, too many of them don't know what to do. And so I studied programs that were intentional about recruiting, training, and supporting black men. That started in 2012. Trustee Freeman, members of the board, Dr. McPhee, and at that time, I only came across five. And to this day, there still is not a lot of focus on that. There's a lot of talk. And I said, look, I found this solution. It's three words. Write the check. Three men said to me, they were seasoned Caucasian men, well-paid. They invited me to a meeting to discuss early childhood and they were discussing the possibilities of early investments in early childhood education in the city of Memphis and Shelby County. And out of that conversation emerged organically, we heard that you're doing some research on black men in this area. I said, yeah, I am. And I created a curriculum, a program, a scope with hopes that I would start a Man Up University because my experience in pre-K-12, like many men who look like me, wasn't the most pleasurable of experiences. Push you towards sports, most adolescent behaviors were seen as criminal. So you get boys who look like me being pushed out of school towards prison. And I just knew in my heart, that's, we can change that. And so we started by recruiting, we, I left that meeting with $250,000 and one of those men looked at me and said, I don't think you could find them. The reason I wanted to make sure that y'all saw that I was a black man, because I was in the room with seed money and they didn't notice I was a black man. We started with ten and three years later, we recruited and placed over eighty. We paid for them to get their credentials. We paired them with mentors. We challenged them to see themselves as change agents. So when they find themselves in meetings where folks are talking about where we are not, what we, what I mean, why we aren't finishing, our mantra this year is, it's on our shirt. Our presence is our protest. One reason we came up with that mantra, because one of our young men came to me and said, so after George Floyd and all the social races, so what are we supposed to do with all this anger? My response, Dr. McPhee, my response, members of the board, was be excellent. Be excellent. We're in the best country in the world. And somehow, we've allowed the narrative to become more than just about us, it's about why we aren't there. All we need is a seat at the table. And so Man Up is that movement to address this problem. And I'm convinced with the folks who are in this room, we have the intellectual capacity, we have the financial ability and the will to make this a reality, to be the model in Tennessee, to be the model in the country. I've spoken in at least eighteen cities who are still quote unquote, we gonna figure out how to do this with this money. Figure out, write the check, we can get it done. So we are missing the line with the FJE. We realize and understand the power of equity, diversity, inclusion, all of us are made better when we have a diverse staff, a diverse team. We want to partner with MTSU, the FJE, the other initiatives with a focus in three areas. Recruitment. I heard some of the report from THEC, I have a partnership with U of M, Christian Brothers, Mississippi other universities. This problem is, this challenge is not indicative to only middle, MTSU. It's like even HBCUs, when it, as it relates to recruiting for education, I don't know if y'all have noticed, but there's a mass exodus of folks leaving the career of education. And for black and brown men, it's they're not considering the field for three reasons. Low status, low pay, and fear of false accusations. And, and that work is also included in how we make sure that these young men stay. Our recruitment is, is, is pretty simple. I've been asked, why does it, why didn't other initiatives like this work? I point to some of them. I said, well, it makes a big difference when you can recruit men who, you can share your story, you can relate to these young men and what they're trying to do. Many of them may want to play sports. And I say, well, hey, what happens if you're not the next LeBron or the next Patrick Mahomes? Well, maybe our coach, you need a teacher's license. It sounds like, it sounds almost too, it sounds almost too simple to be true. But go to a football press today, ask guys, is anybody, you ever considered coaching if this don't work? Has anybody talked to you about becoming a teacher? Over eighty percent of our guys played sports in college, didn't make it, and they found themselves needing a career and didn't know where to go. And that's where Man Up came, comes in. And so we recruit, retention is very important. Over eighty-five percent of our, no, I'm sorry, over ninety-three percent of our fellows who we recruited into teaching, stayed into teaching, and they are still teaching after the second year. That's better than TFA, that's better than a lot of your other organizations. And they point directly to being mentored and coached and supported, supported by someone with a story similar to theirs. It's about building relationships. And then mentoring, and a lot of this has been mentioned before, having a strategic, comprehensive mentoring plan, because one thing we've discovered, none of us wake up each morning not wanting to be our best, not wanting to succeed. You can equip these young men, equip these teachers of color, equip folks with the skills they need to be successful, they'll stay. And so when we, our mentoring approach is pairing these young men with other fellows who've traveled a similar path, who are knowledgeable experts, because we don't want just representation, you have to be excellent and, and, and partnering with, partnering with them. We have monthly sessions where we ground them in pedagogy and practice to help them be great teachers. And as a result, they stay. Not only do they stay, but I point to a study that looked at, that studied third through seventh grade students in Tennessee and North Carolina. Also, I point to a study at John Hopkins University. The study at Tennessee looked at the presence of minority teachers, specifically as it relates to minority students. When students of color have a teacher of color, it increases their likelihood to finish high school and to go into college. For black boys who have a black teacher, it decreases their likelihood of quitting school by over thirty-two percent. The numbers out there are astronomical. It doesn't even consider their ability to teach, just their presence. There's a reason why, if you walk into many classrooms today and ask, young boy, what do you want to be? Athletics, entertainment, nothing wrong, pursue your goal, you know why? We can't under, undervalue the power of a visual, the power of seeing what's possible. And then now I have boys in these schools saying, hey, teaching perhaps could be an option for us. We anticipate and expecting, we've had multiple conversations over the course of a year, how we can make MTSU a hub, a national model. And we believe, I heard you all say you recruited the blue, the true blue tour, Tennessee, Alabama, and Georgia? Y'all gotta come, wait, y'all left us out. Mississippi, right, right below you. We got you, I'll be on that bus, all right? Be on that bus. So we need to take a, we're, we're poised to take an approach right now in this moment in time to not only do regional and local recruitment, national recruitment. We don't have to be on the bus to recruiting California. In fact, we have a partnership with the NFL Players Association since we're talking sports. I was contacted about, by them to recruit their ex-players to come into teaching. I didn't realize that the average NFL player only plays, the average tenure is only two and a half years. And so for a number of those fellows, they don't know what to do, so we're bringing them into education. And so I have, it's in your packet, how we envision doing this, but this is what I want to, I'll close with it, I'll end this session, this portion with this. I'll end this session, this portion with this. So how does all this come together? None of us are as smart as all of us. It's going to take Scholars Academy, it's going to take all of these pieces. We got to focus our energy together. I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but listen, my brother would say choir needs some more than anybody. We can take all of the energy from this room, focus and hold each other accountable and get this done. I'm convinced. And this is what it would look like, obviously. The FJE is the umbrella. Dr. Swett and her work with recruitment, with the university-wide recruitment, inter- inter, that's what, yeah, so Dr. Swett and her work. And then all of these gears are working together. We got to continue to use the research from not only local research, but from THEC. And also, our recruitment and retention efforts, they have to be aligned, and there's already alignment. We just got to get some of the logistics in place so we can make sure that we are all speaking the same language and on the same page, aiming towards the same goals. And then obviously, there's education, community engagement and support, and then advocacy. We all are on the same page. Those who are not, they will fall away. But for those who realize and recognize the power of this moment, let's seize it. It'll be the shortest meeting you have. Everybody in here will be equipped to going into the next meeting and just simply saying, do you believe in equity? You believe in diversity? You believe in inclusion? Do you believe we can be the difference? Write the check. And let's make it happen. Pass it over to, want me to keep going? Play the video? Want to give you a glimpse into some of what our fellows are doing.
I've said many times before, when I was in advertising, we used the term call to action. And that's what Man Up is. It's a call to action to men, to a responsibility beyond the responsibility of their family.
There is an immense shortage of black male teachers across America. There are only 2% of black males that make up the teaching population. And I felt like I had to be a remedy to that. I guess you could say by doing my own part and picking up the profession.
Man Up gives me the opportunity to get certified and licensed and puts me in a position to do this for the rest of my life.
It gave me the safety net, the support system, and the camaraderie of brotherhood to kind of encourage me and be the support system that you need in a tough profession where it's very limited male figures in.
It is a lighthouse for those who are wavering in the teaching profession, especially black men who started who think they want to stop. And I'd say that's the gift that's in it.
There are many other men like me who want to have a direct impact, a frontline, hands-on approach to help our children. And teaching, you know, provides that opportunity. Well, as I said, Man Up, I think, is a movement to where the more that other men hear about this, I think you're going to find more and more men who are going to take advantage of this awesome opportunity.
This is not a nine-to-five. This is a 24/7 kind of a job. And being so, you have to be ready to be whatever these children need.
I think being a positive role model of a male being in the classroom is very rare. I've only had one male teacher.
You're agreeing to accept a dire mission. And that dire mission, that serious thing that you're accepting is other lives in your hands.
Man Up Teach, it is, it is going to make the difference.
So whoever stepped foot in the Man Up, I would say the mission you accept is not to be taken lightheartedly. But you will have support. You will have like-minded individuals who want to see you be successful. And you will also have all the tools necessary to be able to complete your mission.
I just love the level of professionalism. I love the character and the integrity of the men that I've been working with so far. I love the fact that people just do what they say they're going to do, when they're going to do. I love the vision, and I love the relentless pursuit of that vision.
Now, the only thing that's on you is to really give that 100%. You can't, you can't tiptoe with this. You have to go 100% in. You have to be willing to be there after school. You have to be willing to be there before school. You have to be willing to be what that scholar needs in order to be their best. And by them being their best, you're going to push yourself to your best.
And one thing I've always said is that the Bible tells us that greater love hath no man, that he'd give up his life for his friends. And you don't necessarily have to die to give up your life for someone. When you give little pieces of your time, you're giving little pieces of your life. And Man Up, I think, is a movement to help us give our lives for children.
Okay, on that note, Dr. Stewart?
Yes, thank you so much. As you can see, we're not just sitting around. We are partnering with successful partners. This is action. It's not just words. And I would like to thank, would you join me in thanking Dean Vaughn Ossoff and the others for what an incredible job? We'll keep you abreast on that. And Chairman Smith, I know you have a few remarks that we make related to this.
Dr. Mcfee asked me to make serendipitous, but, because I didn't have any knowledge of this. But last week, we, Dr. Mcfee and I went to Senator Frist's home along with his wife and pitched them this program. We didn't pitch a Man Up, but we pitched them on we'd like to recruit and give 50 full scholarships to underprivileged people of color, students that would intern for their scholarship, much like the Mahari model, it's all over the country. I think West Virginia has a similar one. Where what they would owe us for that is to teach back in the community where it's most needed. Might be rural, it might be inner-city, might be both. But just exactly what this young man said, we pitched them not for even a score, which is Dr. Frist's education initiative, identified the exact same thing that this young man did four, five years ago. We pitched Dr. Frist and his wife Tracy to help us find a whale of a funder. Because it looks like a million dollars a year forever. And, you know, it's a million one year, and before it's over, it's four million in four years. So it's a, it's a big commitment. So we didn't get a commitment, but we certainly got a warm reception. And their heart is leaning towards this. In the next few days, I don't have anything to do with it. The next few days, Dr. Mcfee's meeting with SCORE to get their blessing. But I think we have an opportunity to really move the needle here. And I hadn't planned on addressing that. But it goes, like I say, it's serendipitous that, I'm not sure I understand what that means, but-
I just want to add that I have spoken with David Mansori, the president of SCORE. And he has indicated not only his support, but SCORE's interest in helping financing this project. Trustee Freeman?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to say a few words here. Great job on the program, sir.
And the center overall?
Thank, thank, great job on the program and the center overall. I want to, you know, there's some numbers people in here, in this room, who look at numbers. So we have about close to 3,000 African-Americans, I think 2,850 African-Americans. And probably, your programs, you're talking to maybe 20, 25 students. I just don't want the board to think that if we, when we implement this program, you're going to see a huge jump in our graduation rates. Because if you're 100% successful in recruiting 25 African-American teachers out of 2,800 students, if you, if you 100% successful, we're not going to see a huge jump. And however, if this can be expanded, I think we can start making the move north with the data. But I just don't want the board to walk away thinking that this was a huge program across the campus. This is talking about about 25 students initially.
And just let me remind you that this is just one component of the center. The center is going to be attracting students across. It's not just Man Up. That is one component. So it's not our intent to use this as a means of moving the needle. Okay, we need to move on. Mr. Chairman, as I wrap up, I just want to say again, we have outlined strategy. If we had time, I could have presented at least two or three other major initiatives that the university has been working on and plans to implement. But, and I also want the board to know, and I want to remind the board, that late last spring of this year, I established a on-campus presidential task force on closing the achievement gap to coincide with TX Initiative. We've had four meetings, ladies and gentlemen, on this initiative, and a number of recommendations came out of that. In fact, Dr. Washington attended, and also Dr. Stevens, one of our meetings via Zoom. So we are active. We're not just sitting by waiting for something to happen. Now, I want to close on a, not a very exciting note. I tried to talk him out of this. But members of the board, it is with mixed emotion that I let you know that one of our key administrators has informed me that he is retiring in January. Mr. Bruce Petchesak. He's the Vice President for Information Technology, and he's our Chief Information Officer. And he has been with us since 2010, August 2010. And Bruce has done an incredible job, ladies and gentlemen. His tenure here, he was named as one of the top CIOs in the country, according to Exec Rank, quote, "top CIO rankings." I hope that we recognize people like Bruce, who works collaboratively and cooperatively with the exceptional administrative team that we have here. And we certainly are going to miss him. And as you know, this is a very critical position. And we'll begin a nationwide search at the beginning of next year, early January. So please, let's give Bruce a round of applause for his great work. And I do want to apologize for the lengthy reports today, but I thought it was quite appropriate. And I hope that the information we shared is relevant and will bring the fruits that we are looking forward. But before I finally close, I want to remind everyone here that you're invited to the Holiday Open House of the President tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. It has been a tradition since I've been here. And we've had exceptional attendance of members in the community across the board to the President's Christmas party. We had a hiatus last year, of course, because of COVID. But I hope that you all are able to attend. And I wish you and your families a very healthy and happy holiday season. And I look forward to an exciting and productive New Year. Thank you.
Next, we're going to have an executive session with Dr. James Floyd.
I guess JD qualifies, I guess.
Well, our counsel. So I'd like to ask everyone to leave the room, except Provost Burns, Thomas, and Dr. Mcfee, and the board. And cut all the communications.
We are, I did a-
I'd like to thank everyone for being in attendance and the staff for all the hard work putting this together. And wish everybody in America, and God bless America, and have a good Christmas. We're adjourned.